Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item of business is our pledge of allegiance and ask Vice Mayor Barbara McRae to leave.
Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to be the flag of the United States of America and to be the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt the budget, not the budget, excuse me, the agenda for tonight, we've got a couple of things we need to shuffle around. Ms. McRae has asked that we move the Niquasi up to the front of the agenda.
New business.
Under the new business, yes. Okay, anybody okay with that? All in favor? Okay, and the other thing is that sometime, probably about the last there, I have a request to send a letter to the county concerning if we could possibly get some help when we get to the point of putting the crosswalks, the new crosswalks and the paved crosswalks. So if we could just add that, just for discussion.
Under new business.
Anywhere, yeah, the N-H, I guess, just a request to ask them if they would consider helping us out on that project. Okay, anybody else want to change anything, move anything around? If not, we'll move on. And then the approval of the consent agenda for March 4th. Oh, I guess we probably need to excuse Mr. Culp if he's not here tonight, not only because somebody here.
I know that we excuse.
Okay. All in favor?
And Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry for the formality, but just since you added that crosswalks item, would you take a motion and vote just to adopt the agenda with that position?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Okay, we got a second and a motion. Okay, all in favor. Okay, thanks for that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item is the approval of the consent agenda for March 4th. Has everybody had a chance to look at the consent agenda? If not, I mean, if so, I'll entertain a motion to adopt it as presented.
Make the motion and accept the consent agenda.
Second? All in favor? Any discussion? Okay, guess I have that back. Okay, Madam Manager, we've got just a few minutes before the public hearings begin at 6:05. Has anybody signed up for that public hearing?
No service, just some more session.
If not, then we'll just move on here. Okay, so let's go into the public session. First person signed up is Diana Thomas. Hi, Ms. Thomas, welcome. You have the lecture.
I've never done this before, so I don't know how to do this.
Well, that's all right. Just real quick, ground rules, we limit to five minutes. Welcome.
When then?
Glad to have you with us tonight.
Okay, first off, I was asked to come here by the Chief of Police after my many phone calls of barking dogs that run loose all night. I've called as late as 1:00 in the morning and I can't start calling till 11:30. So I've called so many times that when I went down to make a formal complaint, he told me about this meeting and that we're going to maybe rewrite some laws since they hadn't been looked at since the 1970s from what he said. I understand, as he had told me, that there's no leash law. I'm kind of a, that frightens me a great deal because if somebody got hurt in town, I wonder who's going to get sued. I don't think you're going to sue the guy that got a leash on his dog because he might not think about that anyway. So I would fear that they would come after the town. So I, on a regular basis, have to do something and either sleep in another room. All my neighbors are having this issue because none of them can come. So that's one part of it. There's another part of this that's been going on. Some of you may have, back in the spring or summer, there was a feral cat right up in both newspapers. I happened to be out of town the week that it came out, but it all resulted from me. I happened to rent someplace in town here, out on Tri-Montrell, and when I moved there, there was probably thirty-something stray cats on the property. And everybody told me that they had called repeatedly, Animal Control, they never did anything until I started calling, and then they still didn't want to do anything. And with that, I called the county manager, Mr. Rowland's?
Rowland.
Rowland, at the time, I went and spoke to him personally. He didn't move fast enough for me, so within 24 hours, I called Mr. Bill, and he moved very quickly. There's a problem with Animal Control here, not doing their jobs, simply not doing their jobs. I have been a person who has managed wildlife preserves, or I have to trap off if we have too many raccoons and things like that, so I have to keep six traps. They brought two traps out for thirty-something cats. They said that's all they had in the county. That's ridiculous. I was met with, I wish I knew the man's name, I've been describing. He asked me what he was supposed to do with these cats, and I said, "Catch them and get rid of them." He said, "Then what am I supposed to do?" I said, "I used the word 'kill,'" he was offended by that, then I changed it to "euthanize." I believe that the newspaper ended up printing that they would euthanize twenty-seven cats off that property. But they had been, but the, Animal Control had been called for nearly two years, and they had done nothing. Not one time had they done anything. And they started working at it, and then that still had to be called back and called back and called back, always only bringing two. They finally got three cages out. We still have three of those remaining, three of those strays. I have called, three of my other neighbors have called, my landlords called about a week or so ago, and without the officer coming out and investigating it, he told my owners that there was no problem out there. We have three stray cats, and I just saw one of them today, and they're pregnant. So we're about to start this all over again. This is county resources that are being spent in a way that shouldn't be spent this way. I'm sure that we could all find a better way of spending our money in this county, and I am new here. I am like everybody else. I came from someplace else, but where I came from, everybody moved to Florida. So I'm a born and raised Floridian, and I came here because everybody went to Florida. And so I understand that everybody gets sick and tired of hearing us say, "Well, you know, where I came from?" Well, I've heard it from all over the world, where I come from. So a leash law is a smart law so nobody gets sued. This cat problem, I don't know if anybody's ever known anybody that had cat scratch fever, but I have. And I've known people who've lost limbs, that people who were sick for a long, long time and could not really heal those wounds well. So I don't understand why we can't get Animal Control out there to 373 Tri-Montrell and finish what they started last year.
But Ms. Thomas, is that for the record, is that your residence?
That is the residence of the building. My happens to be number six.
Number six.
Is my unit.
Okay.
But there's ten units there.
I got you.
Just about every one of us have called Animal Control at one point or the other. Some of us have called repeatedly, many times in a week. But when I found out my landlords, and I'm getting ready to sign another lease, which I really don't want to do because I can't get the county to get out there, this, we're in town. We have three dogs every night that run, that run in our neighborhood. They're out loose every day, they bark all night.
Ms. Thomas, I appreciate and I understand exactly your concern. What I will do, if this is okay with the board, I think we probably need to have a meeting with the Animal Control or perhaps the county manager, our manager and the county manager.
There's a gentleman that works there that has red hair, he's very tall, and he's rude.
I don't know.
I don't know his name either, but there's not that many people that work there, so I don't think it'd be hard to get that out.
We will get on to this, yes, ma'am.
And just right before this meeting, while I was talking to one of my neighbors who could not be here tonight, I have all the ordinances here. She knows them better than I do. I looked down at the window and one of those stray cats was pregnant.
We'll see what we can do to help for the Animal Control.
We have, we have absolutely, we have five of them within two properties. Figure that out, if there's a couple of females there, we got twenty cats and.
Well, I had a brother that had cat scratch fever years and years ago, so I know exactly what you're talking about. All right, let us see what we can do for you and make sure that we have your telephone number and your address so we can get back to you.
Who would I give that to because I need to leave?
The clerk at the end of the table here, just real quick, just give him your telephone number, and I've got your name.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, should we do the public hearing and have the briefing by Mr. Setser or just move on?
Yes, we can forward.
Okay, and then we'll come back to public comment.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Setser, you want to give us the briefing on the public hearing for the multi-tenant sign ordinance amendment, excuse me, where we are on that.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Yeah, this text amendment we're doing is to the sign ordinance, it's chapter 155, and it's a change in 155.11 on the sign. This member, it started, I guess, back in November 18 with the AAA's that were having an issue with moving into a building that would house four or more tenants and have a really small sign in the neighborhood mix use, so the MICR was only limited to thirty-two square feet, which was pretty small for that many tenants. Since then, planning boards met, town attorney has drafted a text amendment, which the planning board has went over and changed a few little areas. They decided if, took the part that John wrote where if a neighborhood mix use is bordered a state road or a federal road, Mark Calway, that it could, it's in a multi-tenant facility, a larger sign could be built up to fifty square feet and ten feet in height, which is not, our sign ordinance would allow up to eighteen foot, so it's not as tall as the sign ordinance allows. So this is, you know, it's a mix use area with residential as well. Still leaving, if it's a single tenant facility, the thirty-two square foot would still be intact. Planning board reviewed this in January and naturally signed to approve it, and we can now move forward.
Thank you, sir. No one signed up, so to speak, was anybody here that wanted to speak on the sign ordinance? If not, I'll declare the public meeting closed. Moving right along, we have two more people here on the public session. Mr. Lynn, Mr. Dave Lynn, welcome, sir.
Thank you. I thought, go ahead and talk to y'all tonight about two upcoming events that request y'all support by closing Main Street. The first one will be on June 15th, will be the Braveheart 5K. It'll take place during the Taste of Scotland. It means our Braveheart 5K route goes down Main Street to Harrison Avenue. Request y'all support by closing the street from 7:30 until 9:30. That'd be a perfect time, because that's when the race, because the race starts at 8:30, so you should be able to walk it or run it within an hour, so.
I thought in the past we just closed it for the start of the race.
Uh, no, because well, the Main Street, well, I guess the Taste Scotland Festival.
Oh, okay.
Would be taking place during that time, too.
I'm thinking of another race.
Yeah.
It was just the start of.
Just the start, but no, but hopefully the Taste Scotland will be with you soon, and they'll request the whole Main Street to be closed during that time period. But I was just requesting y'all support because we always, we always have the registration in this area down in the parking lot on that date, on June 15th, so.
I was thinking about that when I'm going to run up to all your law.
Oh, yeah, and we're going to film that for sure.
Don't get smart in here with the table.
I think with what, Amazing Races?
What was it, the trail, whatever it was?
Yeah.
We just closed it long enough.
The Nationals, yes.
You're right, I forgot all about the Taste of Scotland. Okay, what's your next?
And the next one is on, this will be the Second Annual Eighties Flashback Parade on August the 3rd, and I gave y'all some information about the upcoming events. It's a whole weekend event benefiting the Greenville Schronel Hospital where sixty-two families in Macon County receive free services. And this year, we actually are getting a lot of out-of-towners interested in being part of the parade. Last year, we had thirty-one entries for the parade, and this year, we had a lot of out-of-towners. We have one guy already do a promo video as Captain America and also as Batman promoting all around the country for us to bring people in here, and I request y'all support that. The event will start at 10:00 a.m., and they would travel, they would travel from, just like the Christmas parade, but down to Harrison Avenue, turn right, and then come down Church Street to the square where they have a meet and greet, because last year, we had a meet and greet there where all the characters and all that kids got to take pictures with all the, like last year, the Blues Brothers. This year, Dwayne Cave and them have a good one. I can't tell you what it is, but you'll be surprised. I'm really shocked seeing the two.
Well, I'm going to approve it before it happens, and this is going to have to come before this, those two.
I bet you'd be amazed by what they're planning on doing, but this year's going to be, it's going to be a great year, it's going to be the second year of the parade. I just ask permission from the board to close that down from 10:00 a.m. until about 11:15 a.m. to square, that's when we have. We're also doing this year, too, we're doing a mullet contest, too. Suzanne Watson from Sophisticated Hermit Crew will be doing judging on the mullet, the hair on contests and all that. We have a lot of different things going on, so this is going to be a fun weekend. It's getting bigger every year, we have a lot of out-of-towners, so I'm excited about this year.
Okay.
So that's all I ask, then y'all think about those and love to hear a positive review.
The mullet contest is limited to Stacy and Dave.
Yeah.
It's not going to be much.
Yeah, and they get a complete makeover, so it's going to be really neat, and we have, it'll be just fine, so thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Can we just, yes, ma'am?
Ms. Mayor and Council, by May, I did receive Mr. Lynn's request early this morning, so that will be on your consent agenda for next month.
Okay.
For approval, we have enough time.
Do we need to vote on either one of those tonight?
No, you'll see it again next month.
Is that okay, Dave?
That's perfect. Just, I didn't know if I made the deadline or not, far as though.
That's okay.
You're good. Ms. Taylor? Welcome, Ms. Taylor, how are you?
Thank you. I'm representing the Streets of Franklin Heritage Association, and we just want to take just a moment tonight to thank Summer, as ordered, and also you, Mayor, for the sign that's placed here on the banner that says the Merchants of Main Street welcome you, and it has restaurants, shops, and museums on the sign, and in between an interim of timeframes that can be placed, and we just want to thank you for putting it there. We've had some positive feedback from some of our tourists coming in, saying, "Wow, I haven't been to a town that really actually welcomed me on Main Street." I do want to let you know that our merchants are gearing up. We have had a tremendous success of all of our merchants joining the Main Street Association. We're finishing up with the final two, picking up their checks this week, but that will help with some of our advertisements and some of the events that we have downtown. And we just wanted to stop and take a minute tonight and thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
What was going on Saturday? There was not a parking space, and the sidewalks were literally jammed with people.
There was just a lot of people downtown.
There were.
They couldn't get out, and it was awesome.
Of course, it was great.
We don't complain.
Yeah.
It was awesome.
Thank you so much, Ms. Taylor. Okay, let's move on to, I'll pass this down, if you would please, ma'am. Okay, under new business, I think real quick, like we'll do the board action on the multi-tenant sign amendment. Does anybody on the board want to discuss that? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll make that.
Make that motion in a second.
I'll see.
All in favor? Okay. And we moved the, yes, the discussion on the Niquasi Initiative proposal, Ms. McRae?
As you all know, we've been, the Niquasi Initiative is an organization that really the town is part of, Macon County is part of, the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians and Main Spring Conservation Trust, we've been meeting for quite a long while. And what has come forward is a proposal to divvy Indian mound to this organization, which is a community development organization. And that means a community development organization is a nonprofit that is a community-based corporation focused on revitalizing the areas in which they are located. That's formerly what they are. In this case, that includes the area around Niquasi Mound, it also includes development of the Cherokee Heritage Corridor, which is an element of economic development for Franklin, Calway, Cherokee, and surrounding areas. The Board of Niquasi Initiative is made up of representatives appointed by the four partners, which are the town, the county, the Cherokees, and the Main Spring. Juanita Wilson, I'd like to recognize her, she came over from Cherokee tonight. She and I are the co-chairs of the Niquasi Initiative now. So what this will do is allow the Cherokees finally, after 200 years, to have some representation in the management of the mound. I think it's kind of interesting, 1819 was the treaty by which they lost this territory. And then there was an effort made to allow them to protect the sacred places like the mounds through a reservation system, and that was undone, in violation of the treaty. And so now, 200 years later, we have an opportunity to do something really historic and to reverse that wrong. And I'd just like to say, it's truly, truly exciting. I think through the Niquasi Initiative and through the Mountain Partners which preceded it, we've had an opportunity to become much closer as partners and friends and understanding each other better, and all the group that has been involved in that has been very, very active, and we're getting ready to unveil the first phase of the corridor, which will be this beautiful kiosk at three locations. The one at Calway is up, if you want to go see it, there's a viewing stand overlooking the Calway mound and Village Site on the other side of the river, and we'll have a kiosk like it soon, Niquasi, with interpretive panels, so people will understand what happened there. I wrote this very long statement, and I don't want to read it. If anybody wants to pick one up, I made some extra copies, but it kind of gives my rationale, the reason I'm so excited about this. I want to give Juanita a chance to say something tonight. Juanita, if you want to, come up to the front and just say something from your heart.
That's how I do this, I do very well with prepared speeches, Shiladada, Juanita, Luisi, Dodo, saying hello to all of you, I'm Juanita Wilson. This touches you in a way you guys will probably never know. It was probably ten, fifteen years ago, I had a vision for creating a cultural corridor that would connect our mounds, our historical sites, and not just that of the Cherokee, but that of, there's so many cultures throughout western North Carolina, your Scottish, your Irish heritage, Appalachian people. We depended on each other way back in the day for a very survival. And for this to happen, and you guys to support it in such a strong way, I'm trying not to get too emotional, but bringing that back home is, it reunites us, and no one loses anything. We all gained so, so very much by doing this. The Mount Partners came together over controversy, I'll just go ahead and put that out there, but what we've been able to do to heal that and move on and get to this level of collaboration and partnership and really love for one another is amazing, and I think it's to be a model for a lot of other counties and a lot of other states and where however far it can go. We need it in this time of division and not caring for each other and not, in so much disagreement going on across the world. I just, I don't know what to say other than if you will support this, I'll be very grateful I can to make sure we stay strong. Barbara's a wonderful partner, and we have a lot of trust and support from my side, from the Eastern Band, and I think we can only make that stronger, and they're stepping forward in a way that's impressive and for the Eastern Band, I was just saying that, too. So I won't be long with it, but I do appreciate everybody that's had a part in this, and it's just been amazing to watch it unfold, all these years of working so hard on this.
Thank you so much. And the little paper that I wrote, I called it, "We Are All People of the Mountains," and I think that's what we've learned over the course of this, that we really have so many things in common, we are one people, and I think it's time for us to recognize that, that it can be our strength going forward to really develop the economies of all of our areas that bring us all together. So with that, I'd like to ask all of you if you would agree to this historic transfer to.
What's the steps? What's the next steps?
Well, that will be up to John.
It's up to the board, but.
Well, yeah, but I mean to write, to do a deed.
But I mean, we wouldn't be agreeing to anything tonight, we'd be agreeing to move forward.
Yes, to.
Correctly.
To allow him to.
And what would be involved is a working agreement, obviously a deed transfer, and to work out the details of it.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, Juanita, I'm very much for this, but I just want to make sure that it's not a decision we make tonight. In the end, it's a decision to start going forward, and I'm certainly favorable.
And I agree with the procedure, really, that's, you were at a position to advance the process tonight, and it would be at your next meeting where I would have a deed for you that would be ready to legally, finally, transfer ownership of the property to the initiative. You can do that. There are restrictions in the deed that the town holds now, but they basically are, for one, not sure how enforceable it is because it purports to give standing to every citizen of the town of Franklin, if you ever were to transfer it in a deed that interfered with your historic preservation of the property, they could potentially, you know, make a claim. But that's exactly what you're trying to do here, and this kind of transfer is contemplated in state law where you would transfer to a nonprofit corporation, and you're actually required in state law to do it, do so with a preservation agreement or conservation agreement in the deed. So it's going to be very clear to everybody exactly the terms under which it's being transferred to the initiative. So that would be at your next meeting.
I think we'll also need the makeup of the Niquasi Foundation, how it's established in, because I think we're going to have to look at that as well, too, to see what we're dealing it over to from the town standpoint, the makeup of.
And I think that's appropriate. It does need to be a nonprofit corporation, and I understand it is a 501(c)(3) already.
It is a 501(c)(3), yes.
So, I mean, that tells me a couple of things right there. It's got corporate status, and it's already been through the very large hoop of.
And it is a community development corporation, so, which is the appropriate type of vehicle.
I move that the manager with council move forward in the appropriate manner to keep this, yes, ma'am?
I just want to ask something before we do that. Well, there, what happens, I know we're just about moving forward, but if the nonprofit dissolved, what would, how would that revert in such a deed that you were?
And that is part of what the conservation agreement is going to, that's right there in the deed, is going to spell out if it ever was to. I mean, also, I think you could take some comfort in the idea that, you know, as a 501(c), it's already pledged to the federal government, none of this is going to any private benefit, so it would have its own obligation to wrap up by transferring it to another nonprofit type entity, or it could potentially revert straight to the town if that in a deed filed for something.
Well, I mean, yes, whatever, the devil's in the details, to some, whatever extent is, but I'm thinking that I want us to explore a little deeper, right?
Well, I was only asking that trying to see if you came back next month and we said, "Oh, put this in it," or something to help speed it along, was the only reason I asked that question.
Is there a timeframe? Is there a timeframe that we want, that y'all would like to see?
Well, if you'd ask to Cheek, he'd say sooner the better.
Oh, of course, yeah. You should have the calendar.
No, we're...
May would be ideal.
Yeah, so honestly, and all, May would be really good, it's spring and everything.
Which would give us the opportunity at our April meeting to hash it out some more.
That'd be good.
I guess the other question I have, when do you think that we can have a architect's drawing of what the, what it's proposed to be like, if you can get the property?
For the kiosk?
Well, the kiosk, I've seen that, yes, it looks very nice, very nice.
You mean for the museum? What are you talking, for the museum? Oh, okay, okay, we've made on that, so I think it's possible to be something, yeah, that's what we talked about. I'll second Joe's motion.
Okay, yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, Ms. McBrady, do you have anything else?
Yep.
Okay, all right, we'll move on back to street closing request for Spring Tokyo, the second, Mr. Ledford, welcome, sir.
I'm standing in for Jimbo today, unless he is here, then he's coming back. But I have some sheets for you guys, a personal...
Counselor.
Counselor.
Sorry.
This is the street request, and also in it is a map, as well as, I talked with Donnie at Frogtown, sat down with him, and discussed what we were wanting to do. And he wasn't completely happy with the entire plan we had, but he, we sat down and he said that he's completely fine with closing Carolina Mountain Drive. He is fine with closing South Patton after hours when he closes on Saturday through Sunday. So at that point, then I went and talked to Jeff Zama, and Jeff is fine with anything. He's just, whatever you want to do, he's fine with. And then I got with Drake Software, and you'll see the last page of that is Jerry Greelove giving us his okay with that as well. So we did do our due diligence, speaking with our neighbors and making sure that we're not affecting anyone's business. So we felt like we talked to the three main people in that area that are going to be directly related to the street closings with all of their approvals on that. So now we're just hoping that the council will approve as well.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You have it in pink or red?
Yes, yellow is the venue.
Yellow's the venue.
Pink is north, is the Carolina Mountain Drive.
To the east. You're not suggesting, I don't think you are, to close it all the way to Philip Street?
No.
Right.
We're closing it from the corner of Carolina Mountain Drive.
You're requesting, you're requesting it be closed from the...
To the end of the field, the empty field next to the Drake building, right before the apartment's there with the...
And then you're asking after the establishment, Donnie's closes to, to close South Patton?
Correct, which would be after eight o'clock on Saturday through Sunday.
Oh, there aren't people living in those apartments there, and I...
We wouldn't be there, they would have access from coming the direction of Hot Spot to their location. They would also have access right there with the restaurants for sale, but the bank is a community bank, they would have access there as well.
But that's not where they live?
That's the quick, what do you mean, that's not where they live?
Real restaurants not where, aren't there people living in that apartment building at the end of Carolina Mountain Drive?
We're not blocking that area.
Well, that's one amazing...
No, we're not blocking the field next to Drake. You know the field that's next to Drake in between him and the apartment complex?
Yes, I do.
From the edge of that field to the corner of Patton, South Patton.
What is the purpose of the road closing?
Several reasons. The main reason is we need load in for the bands. They'll be bringing in big RVs, and they'll need room to load in, and we would have to actually pull them in the venue to load them in if we didn't close the streets. So that is the main issue. And then with the streets being closed, we'll also have some additional parking there for some VIPs that we would have on the other side, and then maybe some vendors on the streets as people are coming in. There's a, obviously, beyond the gates, there's no adult beverages, so they would be able to visit those, anybody who wanted an area, whether it was just to get away for a minute, it'd be a good spot for it as well.
The beverages?
Right, there'll be no alcohol on the streets, so...
What about off the premises there?
Nothing's, there's no alcohol premises.
Now, is this generating funds for any type of nonprofit, or is this strictly a for-profit venture?
We are looking at two nonprofits that we're getting ready to work with now, we don't want to announce anything until we have it.
Do we have the email from...
Yes, Mr. Greelove, it's on the back.
Okay.
Yes, sir. He even said that he would just have his employees send out an email on redirecting them on how to get on the other side of the parking lot there.
Is the event beginning at one o'clock on Friday, April 19th, or...
No, sir, the load-in starts at one o'clock for sound checks.
I just want to say that I, this has nothing to do with what you're doing. I understand what you've done, but I just feel that if we do this, we're setting a precedent for other businesses or people to start asking for street closings. That's my big concern about starting something, because it will just start that, and that's not something...
But we have had two street closings requests this evening.
On Main Street?
Yes.
And that's been pretty much a standard.
Right.
You know, I just don't feel this location, there might have been better fits for this than the location that you have. I feel like y'all are taking your business and trying to make us conform to what you want, and maybe that wasn't the right piece of property for that. So I just, I feel a little backed in the corner about it myself. So I'm just telling you straight up how I feel, it's not the business you have.
Right.
It's the fact that it's just not, it's just something a little bit out of the norm from what the other people, I understand the street requests, but...
I just wanted to speak, I've had a little bit of involvement in some of the past events, Scrap Bag, Japaka, I don't know if that's all the property, not many names, but, and they did a good job to bring in pretty big attractions and try to grow into, I think their goal was definitely economic development, not necessarily hindrance to city traffic or city activities. Just not necessarily speaking one way or the other here, but they did bring a lot of people, so there is a safety concern. They need to take the proper steps to come and ask, and I think their intention is to attract people. The old local adage of putting heads in beds, I think is their ultimate approach here, to grow their activities, so, just to kind of, you know, a little devil's advocacy there, benefit of the things that they have to.
But you've advertised already for your event, that, are you going to be able to have it if the street's not closed?
We haven't advertised that the street would be closed.
No, but I mean, are you able to have the event if the street were not closed?
We would find a way, yes. But last street request, we were told we needed to go ask our neighbors, and we did that, and now we're being told...
I didn't ask you to go ask your neighbors, so I'm just speaking from my, I think Mr. Collins said that, and that was, so, I'm just speaking my thoughts right now, it's not the Board's thoughts in any way, just mine.
But we are totally about economic development. I can bring in, if you would like to sit down, I'll show you, we are really making these bands market as well, to drive their fans to Franklin also. Any, every band, and we have 16 of them for the show, is every band member is sharing, commenting, you gotta come to this show, you have to come see us. We're going to definitely be driving the $4,000 needed in this town to do the things we want to do, like the sidewalks and the other things that we want to, you know, do, we're trying to develop some revenue.
You are, you are selling alcohol, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is a music festival, yes, sir.
So you will. What are you going to do about security, making sure nobody comes off your property with open container?
Correct, there's only one route that we have as far as coming in the front and one on the stairwell coming up, and we'll have both of those gates guarded, because we don't want anybody walking out with alcohol, we don't want anybody walking in for free either. So that handles both, and we've also talked with the chief about having an officer on duty at the events.
On duty?
Or not on duty, but an off-duty police officer, we're, we're talking to him about either working with him or the county to have somebody out front, so that everybody understands, you know, you're leaving, you're getting ready to drive, and make sure you're right.
Is the event, like the actual performances, in daylight hours as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I see here you spoke with Donnie, and he's not worried about being closed off, or are you guys gonna have something worked out with him, where you can maybe throw him a bone and people can leave your venue and go over to his place for lunch, or, I mean...
Oh, absolutely, and we want Donnie to be a part of it, and he just doesn't set up or have the equipment to provide food at our venue. But he said, the Carolina Mountain Road, he's fine with, and the South Patton, he said, just, you know, after I close on Saturday and I close on Sunday, I'm completely okay with that. And we obviously respect that as well. We go to Donnie's place a couple times a week for lunch, so we just wanted to make sure that our neighbors were okay with it, and we did get the equipment.
That's the only timeframe that really concerns me a little bit, is that early on Friday thing, just thinking about kids leaving school and people that are still open during that time for business and things like that. That's the only one that is kind of bugging my bonnet.
We can work with you on that. We need to do the closing at a later time or maybe closer to the show, we'll just have to have people out there and let the load men and just have some people out there to make sure they can load in.
What's that look like, when people are coming to unload all their equipment, do they have to stop in the road there, or...
Some of the times they stop at the South Patton, where that stairwell is, they'll come down there.
May I ask you something, sir? Are you a limited liability corporation, or what, what are, what is altered frequencies?
Sure, Larry would know that, if she was here.
I mean, if we're closing the street, a town street, we need to know about if you're covered with any kind of liability.
Yeah, we have, I believe we're in there...
We can bring it back if you...
Yeah, we can bring it back, we have already, I mean, everything for that, so I can definitely get that to you tomorrow morning.
I think if we're closing a town street, we've got to see some form of liability insurance.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Are we closing it for altered frequencies?
I say if we close.
But is it altered frequencies, or is it Japaka, or is it Greeno?
I don't know.
Which one are we closing it for?
Just for the council's consideration, I don't really think you can take on any liability for the town anyway, on account of closure, I mean, as long as otherwise your, if your administration is satisfied that the closure is being done in a, the same sort of safe manner as you would any other street closure, I think that's, that should be the extended liability, whether the street's being kept.
I'd favor letting them do this and see if, see if it works. I mean, it sounds like something that a lot of people would enjoy, and maybe brings a benefit to town.
It is going to bring some, I mean, we've done a lot of things, I don't know if you looked at our Sunday lineup, but we have been, the Discover Church coming, doing a small sermon, and our band will be playing Sunday afternoon, with a couple of great singer-songwriters after that, and a band that, quite frankly, hopefully you can see on the TV soon, we'll be holding that Sunday. So we are for the community, we're just not, you know, for a specific John Rogue music or anything of that nature, we're here for the community.
Well, people are always complaining that there's nothing to do, so...
Right. And we asked you to check with the neighbors, and it looks like you have, and I'm really surprised that Donnie was cool with it, but if he is, as you say, I think I'm okay with it as well.
So where do we go from there?
I mean, I would, is there any more discussion anybody wants to add?
Mr. Collins, have you weighed in on this?
I had lunch down at Donnie's today, and he suggested to me that this plan was, met his approval.
I would, I would be willing to make a motion to approve the street closure, if that's a thing.
We have a motion now, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you guys very, very much.
Okay, I'm sorry, I...
And I just want you to understand why I'm opposed, it's the precedent setting is what I'm about other street closures.
I do understand. I'd love to, I could use some time to drop those city parking signs, I think that would be better.
Okay, the next is the guard rail request for South Patton Avenue, Mr. Ledford and Mr. Crepek.
Good afternoon, my name is Jimbo Ledford, thank you very much for the last vote, we appreciate that, it helps us a lot, and we hope to make you proud. The guard rail discussion, I know this is a long process, and this meeting tonight was just to be a calm and an address, that I think that there's something there that could potentially give a problem down the line. We never had a, we've never had this happen since it happened until we started coming in our music venue, and then we had four in one month, so I tried to listen to what's going on around me, and this, to me, said we need to do something about this. I don't know if the town has any power to do anything about this or not, I don't know if they can direct me in the right direction, but we were hoping to get some kind of guard rails along South Patton Avenue, on the long section of property, because that's where we're going to have a lot of outdoor seating, and a lot of our spectators are going to be sitting along that road. Four cars have drove off that road in the last hunt, three cars have drove off the road all the way, one car almost drove off the road. So we are just here tonight to start the discussion with the town, and see if there is anything that they can do, or any direction they can, they can point us in to move along and get some guardrails. We're going to, we're building a bathroom there, we're going to do some lighting, we have some temporary things up now, we're going to do a temporary fence that will act as a privacy fence, I don't need it, but nothing that will do what a guardrail would do.
Jimbo, were those people that went out of the road, were they leaving your venue, or were they just people passing through?
They were leaving Donnie's. It's weird.
It's just a hard term for some people there?
I can't explain it, quite honestly, I can't. One of them went over backwards, one of them went over so far that they landed on off-road wheels, one of them had to drive up the hill. Yeah. I don't know what they were doing.
Now, that sounds like to sell some tickets.
Yeah. Right. I mean, I swear, one time I walked out, and I was like, you are never going to believe what just happened again.
Cheek, were we called on those accidents, do you know?
Yes, we've worked several in there.
Was any contributing factors going...
Not that I'm aware of.
I read the letter, I believe Mr. Crepek, he wrote to the, to the Board about the, you know, this request. You guys are building some bathrooms down there, right?
Yes, sir.
Those cars have actually hit the structure?
The structure, not a bit, we had the bottom two layers of block done, and when the car, the first car went over, it actually didn't hit the block, the front tires went over, and that was all this hanging on the bank, but when the tow truck towed it out, it knocked that block down. So, once the bathrooms are done, we're going to put lighting along the bathrooms that will illuminate a lot of that area. But still, people are going to be distracted, they're going to see fun things going on over there, they're going to see lights, they're going to hear sound, noise, yeah. I would aim for them to drive and go grab you.
I'm, I'm just worried about somebody getting hurt, you know, bathroom or...
And for now, that's, in a large part, what the road closures are about, safety, safety. And if I can answer a question, Japaka is an LLC, we are the ones that are going to be renting the venue, altered frequencies.
What, you're renting the venue?
Yes, yes.
So you're renting it out to an outside...
Japaka, we, Japaka is renting the venue, yeah. Well, this isn't going to be a venue that we do rentals, it's just like a wedding venue or any other venue that has rentals. It just so happens that I own the company that's going to be renting the venue from yourself.
Renting it from yourself, for sure.
Is this a state road, or is this a town?
It's a town.
Town.
There's no question, Donnie concurs that he would like to see some guardrails, it's a town road, that's...
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may, our public works director is here tonight. He'd like to come up and speak on that for a few moments. He has reached out to some contacts to kind of give the board an estimated full cost of what it would cost to install a guard rail. We have looked throughout town with your public works director, and there is only one very, very significantly small area in town that has guard rail currently that's up on Kingwood Circle. But would that all turn over to him, and he can give you some measurements and cost of how much?
We looked at installing guard rail on that section of roadway. We roughly need about 335 feet would be, would make that section a safe zone. And we would go all the way down to the end of the road where the very end wouldn't need it. I reached out to some of the contractors through DOT that I know that installed it. They're roughly in the $40 to $50 per foot range. And if we were split that in the middle and we were at that $50 a foot, we're at like $16,000 to install guard rail. And that is DOT approved, just like you'd see out here on the side of the highway.
Is there any possible means of securing outside funding for that from DOT or any kind of grant or anything at all?
On our private roadway, that would be a cost that we would have to incur.
What would be the, of course, if you put some kind of reflective markers up there, that wouldn't stop anybody, but that road's been like that for what, 100 years?
But there's more traffic now.
But there's more traffic and now their bathrooms underneath it. And $16,000 for private venue, to me, is not a good, a good deal for the town if we have to take it out of our fund.
Well, then there's all those people that are eating at Donnie's that have been going over the bank.
Over the bank?
He said it was...
They were coming from...
From Donnie's.
He said they were coming from Donnie's.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah, now that's on relieving it, altered frequencies.
Another thing to keep in mind, once we do install it, we will have a cost of maintenance if you have another accident out there. Typically, that cost, once it's installed, you're in the $20 a foot range. So just something to keep in mind if you, the board would like to move forward with that.
How much time would it take the county employees to install such a thing? That's pretty labor intensive. And don't you have to have special equipment?
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may, that'd be something, it may behoove us to contract out just from a liability standpoint if we were to do that.
Would that cost, that $16,000 not include the installation of it?
Yes, that was, yes. But that's fully installed, so...
Does that pal bill money?
That's something I'll need to look at because, again, like legal, Ms. Henning and I were talking, if the board could wait until next month and let us further investigate this, because I don't, I don't know that pal bill will cover a guard rail. I would need to look into this.
I think it's typically only paid, but we're going to find out.
Safety enhancement, if you think that would be covered.
I'd be willing to make the motion for you to look into it further. I mean, that would be my motion to look into it.
We have a motion in a second to pursue it further, to look into it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
We'll be back next month.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right, Madam Manager, we're going to discuss the Town of Franklin's fully retirement apprecia, yeah, appreciation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have in your agenda packet, what we're suggesting tonight is just actually add some language into the Town of Franklin personnel policy that deals with employee appreciation upon retirement. And if you'll look in the section that's in your agenda packet, I'll briefly go over that. When a full-time employer retires with an acceptable amount of service to the Town of Franklin, he or she will be awarded a plaque reflecting the town council's appreciation of service and a gift that employees choosing. If a 30-year or more employee so wishes, the town will also host a reception for the retiring employee. Acceptable years of service and gift values would be as follows. At least 30 years of service to the town would warrant a $300 gift. 20 to 29 years of service would be a $200 gift. And 15 to 19 years of service would be a $150 gift. And 10 to 14 would be a $100 gift. This is nothing necessarily new. As we've been practicing this before, it would just be nice from an auditing trail to have that in our personnel policy.
Okay. Any discussion for the board on this?
This is retiring, not just leaving.
Yes, sir. It is retiring. He worked.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Discussion? Any type of motion?
Yes, sir. Question? And I'm not in any way challenging anything. I'm just curious, what makes this not unable to be part of the consent agenda? Could that have been something that was a consent agenda thing? Just the consent agenda is new to me, so...
It could have been, but since this is a personnel policy, I thought the board might have questions and discussion on it since it does involve, you know, retirement. Yeah.
Well, this board actually sets policy, and that is policy. So I think we're comfortable with it. If you are...
Thank you. Absolutely. I just was, the consent agenda is new to me, so we want to, you know, fully understand. Thank you.
I got you. Okay. The next item is the update on the, we need to, I thought I had a motion. Somebody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Okay. Update on the North Line of Department of Transportation Main Street project. Mr. Moore, you're up, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, town board. What I have for you tonight is just to give us an update on where we're at on our Main Street project, where we're at. We're at the third iteration basically of this project that we're in. So we temporarily, we came to an agreement on how we'd like the layout. And now we have reached out to our DOT counterparts and worked on getting a lead date and a construct date for our actual bulb outs for our downtown project. So right now, they have an anticipated lead date of April 23rd, and that will advertise and a date of construction to be able to begin construction of May 20th. This will be, I believe, a 90-day construction date, so we should be everything constructed by we get into Pumpkinfest area. We also talked about some of the events that are happening downtown where they would not be able to construct where if we're having any street closures or any issues, that's going to affect construction compared to what events that were happening downtown as well.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Moore?
That's great news.
Yeah, very excited.
Move on. Go for it.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may add to that, one thing to note, too, and I believe Mayor Scott, you're going to bring it up later, but in regards, this would also include the eight crosswalks on Main Street where the DOT would be looking at matching some prices and helping the town out with that. But it would actually look at doing, there'd be a little bit of a change to the crosswalk here movement, but you would have the crosswalk here, the one down there by Wells Fargo, the four there at the County Square, the one down there closest that connects the annex of the courthouse to Motor Company Grill, and then also the one there at Lazy Hiker. So that gives you a whole fill of Main Street with the brick stamped Brick Look that DOT's willing to help with.
If it's okay, I'll just move on into what I wanted to ask the board to give me permission to do, to ask the county if they would consider funding the four crosswalks that are directly in front of the courthouse and the one that is at the end of the annex, the old Power Company building. It would be, it would be real good if we could have them join in on that because it is for the betterment of the whole county as well as just the town. And these, this really, I think, is going to enhance the looks of downtown in general.
I agree it's going to enhance the looks of downtown. It's downtown. Is this something that we need? Can't we handle this one ourselves?
I don't know.
It's our town. It's our, that's our center of our town. We work with the county better more recently than we ever have. I'm not sure. I don't know the numbers. I don't know how much is involved financially, but it just seems like this is a town project.
Well, it's a town project, Joe, but they've also helped Highlands with beautification things. And I don't think we're asking for too much.
I mean, is there a number?
Mr. Collins and Mr. Mayor, I do have a figure for you. It looks like it's $8 per square foot. It looks like each crosswalk is around 500 square feet. So you're looking at around $32,000.
I mean, we all pay county taxes that live inside the city, too, so...
I'd love to see it done, and I'm of the mind that it couldn't hurt to ask.
That's what I want to do, just ask if they would consider it.
Is the DOT going to pay?
That's with DOT and the town, Franklin working together.
So we're actually asking them for the match, not for the, pretty much, if...
I'm sorry. You said, you said four crosswalks?
Yeah.
Which ones are?
All right, the four at the square, Lake Square.
Okay.
And then the one at the end of the old Power Company building that goes out towards Motor Company Grill.
That one makes more sense to me than the one, the four at this square, because that's a lot of people from the courthouse. I mean, they would be, most of the people would be using that probably.
The four at the courthouse.
Not there at the side, at the...
That was $32,000. Are we paying half that or all?
Okay.
That cost would be ours. So the betterment difference is your standard, what we have out here, it's typically $2,500 area to have done. And then that is the difference between going to a decorative style compared to what we have out there right now.
It's 32 for eight?
Yep.
And you're asking for help for the four?
Okay.
Five, what?
Yes, five. Well, asking for 50/50 on the five or all of it on the five, or I mean, I'm just not, I just think it's our project, that is all.
If I understand correctly, DOT is going to pay 80%?
This would be our cost with eight crosswalks. And this is the town's partnership with DOT.
And so we would be asking, if the board approves it, we would be asking the county to pick up the 20% for those four, those five crosswalks that would be beneficial to the county.
If that's what the town, if that's what you and the board are buying.
I'm not asking for the whole project 20%, but just that part right there. Basically, the county owns the square anyhow. We got it leased. And then you come out of the annex and you cross the street, we've got a crosswalk right there. It's used by the public, county employees and county employees, everybody. Everybody uses the crosswalk except the time I got tossed for jaywalking, but...
They're putting the bathroom and cross town is going to maintain it right in the middle of town, not asking us to help them with that.
I'm sorry. I just think that since our town employees, I mean, I mean, our town residents pay county taxes as well as town taxes, it's a very small amount we're asking for. Just asking them to consider it. But if it's not the feeling of the board to do that, I'll back away from it.
I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I don't, I don't want to necessarily, necessary, but if something in spirit, certainly if they wanted to be part of the project because they want to take ownership, that's fine.
We've worked, we've worked very well on this freeway connector.
What did we budget for, would you ask?
This is taken out of pal bill.
If we've got the money, I'm inclined to go with Joe and say that we should do it all. I mean, that's, that's just my feel. I tend to think we're working very well also, so that's...
Do you guys think it would be bad for our relationship with the county to ask? I mean, because I was of the mind, the worst thing to do is say no. Do you think it would be damaging to our...
Why do you think it'd be damaging? I talked to Mr. Take about this months and months ago. We had to have a little bit.
I say, how many, just here recently, and I mentioned they're putting the bathrooms down here at, last year and I guess maybe this year at Pickin', they're opening it up and cleaning and manning the responsibility of those bathrooms.
That we didn't have paid?
There are so many different ways that we can be working with the town and the county together. This is one, it's a town project. We've got it in our budget. I just feel like this was on us. I just do. And I feel like in the long run, it makes the relationship better.
Well, I guess, I guess I've got my answer because I don't have any desire to ask the county to help with these crosswalks, so I'll just, I'll pull back from it. Okay. Update from Franklin Fire and Rescue Department. Chief, Redlove, sir, you're up.
Good day to you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Madam Manager, as I took the office of fire chief, and in the last couple of months, I've reviewed what the pre-existing administration has done and ways that we need to continue to serve our community and our town. During the year 2012, we went as a fire department and was inspected by the North Highland Department Insurance and got a lower insurance rating for most of our districts. And during that time, after, town management and the previous fire chief went for the county and had asked for a tax increase. And that was due to extending our tax rate coverage. Basically, we were rated on a five-mile district and a six-mile district. And to get a lower insurance rating, you have to fall within those five and six mile plans. We currently have a small area district that falls outside of that, which basically is not eligible for the insurance lowering for lower ratings. So I have come up with a plan to talk with town management about that. Town manager Summer Woodard is aware of that. I would like to ask y'all to consider that, review that plan, and give your thoughts on possibly funding some type of futureing, a substation or securing a way to give the district a better insurance rating that's not currently...
And Mr. Mayor and Council, and Chief, if I may take it a little bit further and you step in as well, too. Basically, what we're asking council for tonight, and Mr. Henning, feel free to jump into, is we're looking at possibly securing a rental facility in this vicinity of the area, the Fred Dalton area, that would allow coverage to be on Corbin Cove. It would take those individuals who I believe currently have a 10 rating down to a four? Yes. If you want to touch about the ratings, right, real quick?
Yes. So we have a current, our districts are divided into a municipal and a rural district. And we currently have a four and a three rating, ISO rating. If we was to have a station, a satellite station, to provide coverage to this area that lays outside of our six miles, it would bring them down to the lower insurance class. Right now, they, at best, don't have any insurance, basically, is the way the state looks at it. So if we had a housing for a satellite station somewhere in the Holly Springs community, we could cover a lot of homeowners in that area that I'm sure would be critical for that.
And when Chief Redlove alludes to a satellite location, realistically, what we're needing at this time is just area, preferably a garage area, which we believe we possibly found to store one of our current pumper trucks there. And that would allow all this coverage to help those homeowners who the town currently serves in this area. And Mr. Henning, if you'd like to touch on kind of from a legal standpoint, the direction we're looking for tonight?
I would, and I had a draft resolution for you that didn't make it in your agenda packet. I apologize for that, it's my oversight. What I think you can propose to do by resolution orally now, and I'll follow up with this written resolution, is to authorize your town manager to seek out a lease or purchase or donation in her discretion of town, property to the town that could be used for a substation that fits the needs of the department. I would suggest you give her authority to enter into a monthly lease of no more than $1,000 per month, with the understanding that that's one out of budgeted funds and two, to be negotiated. So we're talking about a maximum. Although, I'll also tell you, there's no doubt in my mind that that's well within the benefit provided, is well worth that amount. And to otherwise file as necessary with, I think the county has some way in in verifying that... And to otherwise file as necessary with, with, I think the county has some way in in verifying the new certain, level of service that the department would be able to provide at that point, and so does the state of North Carolina. So authorize her also, be my suggestion, you authorize her also to file with the state and the county as necessary. So I will provide you with a written resolution just as soon as I can to close those two things.
Do you have any idea how many people and how many homes we're talking about?
Apparently don't have the partial number. I believe it was...
Sorry, Chief, if I may, I believe we looked at this other day as well. If we are able to secure the location on Fred Dalton Road, I believe, the home unit is a hundred percent, but a little over five hundred homes. Also, tax value with the Fred Dalton, or excuse me, the Corbin Cove area plus Tippet Ranch and the Butterfly area, you're looking at home value alone right there is about seventy-two million dollars. So this would help, help those citizens out tremendously.
And we're using the word "substation" a little bit loosely?
Yes.
This is not intended to be anything much more than a parking spot for one of our current vehicles?
Yes, sir.
That is correct. There will be no personnel, any quarters, manning this station at all. This will be to house a pumper, tanker combination, to provide something within that mileage that we talked about earlier. There won't be no manning of the station or any extra events that has to take place.
Sounds like an open air thing.
I would make a motion to accept, presented by Mr. Henning.
In further discussion, all in favor.
Thank you.
Now we get into the legal in the night. The Duke Energy line crossing agreement, Councilor?
Mr. Mayor, in your packet is a line crossing agreement that you need to consider entering into with essentially between you and Duke Energy. And it's your representation to federal energy regulatory commission that governs things like the water impound at Lake Henry that ultimately Duke has, has authority over. The purpose of this is your utility crossings that are about to go in on the new bridge. So this is essentially like an encroachment agreement that you do all the time with DOT. It essentially says, you're bringing your utilities on this portion of some otherwise government-controlled or through a government authority controlled site, and this is, this lays out the terms of it. So, and I really don't think it operates terribly differently than any other kind of encroachment agreement you've been entered into in the past. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about, at least while I'm in front of Duke. It's here with us if you have any questions for her. I don't think about lowering rates. I don't think she's gonna be in the number and then talk about this. But I'm fine with it as presented with one exception, and that is in paragraph seventeen, it talks about indemnity. We need to, I would request that you approve it as presented with the exception, paragraph seventeen, to say the permit fee will indemnify to the extent permitted by law. Is there some, is there some suggestion that you can't just give a full blanket, full-throated indemnity as a, as a North Carolina municipality? But other than that, it's, I suggest your approval as presented. I'm happy to answer your questions, Ray.
I'll make that motion. We go from the discussion, all in favor. Okay, discussion of Town of Franklin parking schedule, your chapter seventy-three and seventy-five, Councilor?
Mr. Mayor, I think, I'm not sure actually why this got listed for discussion. I think it's, I think it's ready for consideration. You all are aware that you, you've talked about parking a number of times and referred back and forth with your planning board, your request for, for the planning board to consider and look at some features of your ordinances that deal with parking. And I think that they did a really good job of evaluating that and coming up with some needed changes. It's to the planning board, I know this was listed for discussion. It's ripe for your approval whenever you're ready to. You don't, it's not land use, and so you don't have to, this is under your streets and sidewalks sort of authority to regulate, so you don't have to have a hearing or anything on it. It's totally up to you, but whenever it's to your pleasure, you can adopt the ordinances as...
Can we adopt it now?
Yeah.
I'd like to rule it in the council.
Do I have a check? All in favor. Okay, that concludes the agenda, and I'll start around the table, see if anybody's got anything else. Madam Manager?
Yes, sir.
Councilor? Mr. Kinsey? Mr. McManaman?
No, sir, thank you.
McCray? Next one, Mr. Collins? All right. If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
One of our largest assets is our marketing campaign. Is it okay that we say that the thank you to the Town of Franklin for working with us with the town closure?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great press.
Okay, we got a motion to adjourn, and I think I had a second.
I said, did I not?
Okay, all in favor. Yes, okay, standard.